510th meeting of the City of Laurel Planning Commission is now underway. If you wish to be heard at the meeting, please sign the speaker's list provided on that corner over there, that table, and chairman deserves the right to limit the amount of time each speaker has for the each agenda item. Before we start the roll, I'd like the planning commission members to stand up. We'd like to acknowledge our staff with applause for the kind of support they've given us the whole time we've been up here. Infantry guys do that kind of thing.
That's Sarah and Robert.
Okay. So, give me the first agenda item per your request. What number is that?
It'll be a little roll call.
Oh, excuse me. I get so excited.
Council President Smalls.
Here.
Mr. Welford.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Kish.
Here.
Mrs. Bateman.
Here.
Mrs. Highland. Chairman Williford.
Here.
You have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, has everyone read the minutes from the last meeting and are there any questions related there, too?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the Tuesday, March 12th meeting.
Second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Mr. Kish.
Yes.
Mrs. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Welford.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Chairman Williford.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, are we starting with item three?
Yes. The request for the Plan Commission tonight is to amend the approved site and landscape plan. It's a minor amendment. Fox Chevrolet, what they would like to do is expand their service facility by only 20 by 35, and it's on the side west of Washington, north of Talbot. And the expansion is going to place the landscape island. However, what they want to do is make a new landscape island 20 feet over so that none of the tree, they're going to relocate the existing trees and shrubs so the green space is not lost. Staff is recommending favorable for this because they were required to do 100 parking spaces over their entire site and they provided 400, so the loss of 11 parking spaces is minimal. Staff is recommending approval of the amended site and landscape plan, and there's a representative from Fox Chevrolet here in the audience if you have any specific questions.
Okay.
Because size comes into consideration and other statutes, and sometimes it might be prohibited financially.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Sure.
Do we have in our ordinances the kinds of things that the council president is asking for, these kind of, what was the term of art, Mr. Smalls? It was a, you had a name for it.
A pollution preventer or rain guard.
Rain guard. Yeah, I think there's one in front of the high school. There is. That's the only place I've seen one in town.
No, there's actually a rain garden just down the street. There's actually a rain garden down the street at the duplexes, just down the street where they hit Montgomery Street. That's a rain garden in there. Looks like a planning area, but it's actually a rain garden. Yes, you can.
So, there are, there's appropriate latitude.
Yeah, I didn't mean to imply that you had no power whatsoever, but usually it's a function of stormwater management, which is not in our jurisdiction. But I think it should be passed along for sure, without question.
I mean, I would tend to want to support the council president if it's possible. I know there's probably got to be pipes and things dug up, so I'm not saying to go to great expense here, but if it was doable, it would be a reasonable thing to consider. I don't know what staff's opinion is on that. Again, it would be, for me, it would be a, you know, go look at it and see if it's possible kind of thing. Thank you.
And if it's not there, it can be looked at to be put there.
Well, the applicants here, I certainly wouldn't mind hearing what they think about that suggestion.
Please state your name and location for the record. Caught you by surprise, I understand.
My name is Mike Suter. I'm with AutoNation. And we would be agreeable to trying to do something. The area that we're talking about is 20 feet by 35 feet long, and so we're going to move the sod and put the sod and the four trees right back where they came from. I'm talking about a very big piece of grass.
Worth a shot. Worth a shot.
To be determined.
Yeah.
Yeah, to be determined. We can talk to Beung and see if we can come up with something, but it's a really small piece of grass.
I understand.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any more questions?
Well, so, I do, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that, sir. I think, unless there's any other, I don't have a question for you.
Okay.
More for staff. So, is there a way that we can make this recommendation in a way, so that we can dispatch this tonight, and if the applicant can do it and it's willing, that they do it, and then, you see what I'm saying? I'm looking for a procedural way to not make everybody have to circle around this again.
Or just add a condition that says the Planning Commission recommends that the applicant pursue a rain garden or other innovative management device, whether or not it's required by Prince George's County Department of Public Works and Transportation.
Okay, and then...
You're agreeable, we can wordsmith that.
And then if that's not plausible according to Mr. Smalls' kind of thing, then they would carry on with this plan? Is that the way that's worded, Mr. Smalls?
That's it.
Is that okay to word it that way?
Sure.
Okay, we'll let Mr. Smalls make that motion. And, you can't.
What he said.
Yeah, that's weird. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Unlike Congress, we should put it in writing so that, just like environmental concerns, somebody knows that when they come make a bid on anything, and that becomes a part of the evaluation.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, if you do include that in your recommendation, what we'll do is, we'll hold the resolution of approval this evening until it's been edited for your signature, or show it to everybody before you sign. You're agreeable with it.
We're going to bury the horse that's already dead.
No, I'm good. I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Are we clear now? Are we ready for a vote?
Let me see if I can do this. So, I, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the amended site plan and landscape plan application for 501 Washington Boulevard filed by AutoNation with the following changes, that the applicant and staff will work together to see if there is some pollution management, suitable pollution management device for this location, and if it's suitable and reasonable of the applicant and the staff to go ahead and do that, and otherwise, we approve the basic, move the island.
Mr. Chairman, I'm the second move.
Move in second.
Sounds good.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Kish.
Yes.
Mr. Welford.
Yes.
Mrs. Bateman.
Yes.
Chairman Williford.
Yes.
Motion carries.
It also includes the resolution.
No.
No, that's the next one. That's the next one, okay.
We can't do that until they...
Yes, yes.
You can move in the resolution, subject to the edit being put into it, though, if you would.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we respond favorably, recommend resolution for approval, Resolution 1309 PC, with these changes left to your judgment, Mr. Chairman, when you sign the resolution.
I'll second that.
Seconded again.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Kish.
Yes.
Mr. Welford.
Yes.
Mrs. Bateman.
Yes.
Chairman Williford.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'm up to seven, if that's correct. Conservation...
Public hearing for number two.
Two is the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Seven.
Are there, we're up to seven?
Yes.
Okay.
I was just making sure that we didn't have anybody signed up for a public hearing on number six.
There is a six here.
I think that's...
Mr. Gibbs, thank you.
He's not till seven.
You had yourself listed as number six, sir. Are you talking about, do you want to speak about this one?
Item six.
I apologize.
Okay, so that's what we thought, okay, so those six.
Same thing on Avalon Bay as number six, again.
That's seven.
I'm saying it's up here as six.
Yeah, but it's written as six, so we've got three sixes here, but I think, there's nobody that wants to speak on this, right?
I apologize.
That's quite, no apology necessary. We just had our foot in our mouth, that's all.
And just to forewarn you, I'm the rest of the agenda, so in case you want to quiver your honor.
Item seven, Forest Conservation Plan Application, Anderson's Corner 6901 Van Duzen Road, filed by Avalon Bay Communities Incorporated.
Okay, and this can be fairly quick, Mr. Chairman and members. This is a forest conservation plan. It goes by strict requirements of the City of Laurel's zoning ordinance. We're dealing with 22.7 acres. It's all in the staff report. The ordinance requires a reforestation of 2.5 acres. The applicant is providing 3.1, so they've met or exceeded, and we recommend approval of the forest conservation plan and the subsequent resolution.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I do have one question for Carl. Of the 3.1, just so I understand clearly what I read, is that going to be all reforestation on-site, or is there some fee in lieu?
A lot of that's retention of existing forest cover. The 10.8 acres is the existing forest cover on the property, and they're only clearing 7.7, so I'm assuming the residual is actually tree retention.
Tree retention.
Then, rather than forestation.
Right.
But for what they did clear, the ratio asked them to provide 2.5, and they provided 3.1.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly welcome. Motion and vote?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Forest Conservation Plan Application, Anderson's Corner 6901 Van Duzen Road, filed by Avalon Bay Communities Incorporated, and include in the motion the passage of action on Resolution Number 1304 PC.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Welford.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Kish.
Yes.
Chairman Williford.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'm looking at 11 now? Are we all on the same page?
We have a separate motion for this.
Who has 11? Item 11?
Thank you. This is a little more detailed than the previous one. What you have before you is a final MXT plan. This is the first one using the city process that we've actually gotten to this far. If you remember, this is called Anderson's Corner in memory of a former Planning Commission member in front of us that we remember dearly. The subject property is divided into multifamily use and also commercial use. The commercial use portion of this property is not a part of this particular application. This is done by Avalon Bay, and I won't go into detail, be redundant to their presentation. There's a couple of things I do want to cover in the, we were provided an updated traffic study today. I will leave the applicant to explain the updating to you because there's been a lot of, I don't know what word to use except jostling, of traffic capacities versus their neighbor, the South Conterra, and a lot of assumptions, this and the other application about, you know, how much should the city cover it. I won't get into the details of that. I would want to focus on one thing that's a part of our recommendation, and that is, and again, I'm not disputing, Public Works made a comment about the parking compliance ratio with this, and I refer you to Exhibit 2. This is something you did in Archstone where I said, to challenge the applicant to say, what is your parking experience? Because if you don't provide enough parking, you will pay the price, you know, for something like this. So, I refer to Exhibit 2, where as part of our recommendation to you, the applicant is providing 1.6 parking spaces. All these, oh, excuse me, have, there is limited garage parking, there's 514 surface spaces, 42 integral parking in garages, and 12 standalone garage spaces, which, some of these are tandem because you're going to, this obviously would be premium space, obviously, in these. Just going briefly over the findings of fact in relationship to this development complying with the zoning ordinance, just a general view. Just wanted to make a couple of comments. This is obviously subject with the exception I just noted, to the Department of Public Works memorandum regarding parks and recreation. We had a great deal of discussion with the Parks and Recreation Department. Their memorandum is enclosed now. What they did was they said that they would like to see a tennis court of the property, and we said the best place for that would be the clubhouse, but unfortunately would not fit. So, I'm here, I can verbally confirm that the director of Parks and Recreation said that a volleyball court next to the clubhouse was an acceptable substitute, so we have no other conditions as far as park recreation goes. It's important to note that this development is not gated, so it does, it accesses obviously Van Duzen Road. It will also access Conti Road relocated when it's built on the east side, the Conti Road will flank. I have a slide that I'll show you this later on of the road system in this area as it will appear when we're all long gone at the rate Conterra's going, but, I mean, not the crack of it, but just the rate. There's a lot of highway construction, but there's even more in the master plan that's envisioned to be developed as part of Conterra. Recommending the final MXT be rebooted by the commission, obviously. The lighting plan should be submitted to Public Works as they usually are for review before a building permit issued. And again, looking at the alignment, they may have to make adjustments in their record plot, which had already been approved by the commission, if in fact there's additional take on the easterly side of the property for Conti. Apparently, the county doesn't seem to be moving quite on the schedule we thought it would, and I've heard, and the applicant can correct me, that this likely to happen more in the spring of 2015 rather than the spring of 2014, but like I said, I may be mistaken. So, again, we think this complies with the MXT, subject to the two comments, the update that I gave you regarding the acceptability of the volleyball court, and with all those conditions and comments that are in the staff report, and all the exhibits, the traffic study, et cetera, et cetera, we recommend your approval. And again, a lot of these things are, we didn't add in all the boilerplate conditions that are, you know, that are obvious in site and landscape plans. Obviously, the landscape plan has a great deal of landscaping in it. This property is further from the interstate, so noise abatement is not a serious issue with that. It's more of an issue to the south when what we know or will know is kind of worth having to extend it as built. It may eventually become a six lane, but so much stormwater management was taken from this property on the south side, it's almost a buffer, you know, because the buildings are not adjacent to the roadway, and Van Duzen is not proposed to be expanded a huge deal in any master plan, and that includes the entire alignment up to 198, because it's the applicant and other people pointed out to us, when the Conti Road interchange opens, traffic volumes are, I'll get it out, are projected to actually be reduced from their current levels because then people will go where they want to go, and that's I-95 in and out of this area. They don't have to, right now, you have 212 or 198. Those are your choices, despite the ICC, forget that, but the Van Duzen Road, Conti Road interchange will diffuse a lot of traffic from the existing Van Duzen Road. So, that's all I have, if there's any questions.
Questions of staff?
Yes.
Please, go ahead.
Just a couple, trying to match up. Exhibit 2 says that we are providing 568 parking spaces, but your memorandum of March 26th under parking shows 552.
Is that the Public Works memorandum you're referring to?
Yes.
Yeah, that was incorrect.
That was incorrect.
That was pointed out to them, but they weren't correct. They weren't counting some of the garage spaces in their assessment.
Okay, and then, a couple of questions on the technical report, or would you prefer I wait until...
Keep going.
On number five, if the development is staged, each building phase is designed as a self-sufficient entity, it says the residential component is not planned to be staged, so just, again, this is new to me, new for me in terms of something like this. So, if that changes, does that then, if we approve it based on the report that says it's not planned, but then they...
It might be viewed as a departure from your approval, but right now, they're planning to build the entire community. Now, obviously, the commercial area is a separate phase, but it's simply not part of the application at this time.
Okay.
But it does rely on the same entrance point in Van Duzen Road than this does, obviously. It's a furniture, because in the future, you won't be getting off Kenworth Avenue just anyplace you want to, any more than you will be able to get from Conti Road anywhere you want to.
Right, okay.
Things are unfortunately changing that way from access to that point.
Thank you. And on number seven, on the detailed site plan, the finding, I just was wondering if staff could say to me, it says, "The buildings proposed are markedly improved over multifamily development in the past." I was just curious as to what that was referring to? The past, in the past in Laurel, or the past...
Everywhere. I mean, we've accepted some, I'm going back 30 to 50 years now.
Okay.
That, these are no longer, your typical, there'd be a stereotype, garden apartments, typically looking the way they're done, these particular ones, I think you have the renderings in front of you.
Yes, okay.
Have, and these are still subject to the Community Standards Board, but obviously, we always welcome into those.
Thank you. I just wasn't sure whether the past of what they had submitted, you're saying in the vast...
Oh, no, this is just, they're, again, the mayor's plan is to raise the bar, and I think this meets that intent because the varied roof lines, the colors, the inset, they have, it's just, you know, it's just a much better product than what we've seen to date in standard garden apartments. And what I'm saying, that I'm not putting down Archstone. Archstone, to me, is not a garden apartment.
Right, okay. That's all, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome, certainly. I think my first time I've heard, I've been on the board since 1999, and the first time I heard the word Conterra, and what was going to follow, I think I had hair. But as I looked around, driving around, looking at everything, and all the stuff that's in the work that you all have done collectively, I still don't know where I am when I'm driving out there. I have no idea where this intersection's going to be and where it is, and I found Ben, Virginia Manor Road, today, all by myself, so, amen, thank you. Do we have any...
I do have the ultimate slide for you, but I'll wait.
I'm waiting for it. Yes, someone from the, this applicant, this time, you're really on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, and of course, President Smalls as well. Edward Gibbs, an attorney with offices at 1300 Caraway Court in Largo, and pleased to be here this evening representing Avalon Bay.
Did you get your bonus?
No, not, well, that's my next case, actually. I'm still waiting. I'm following them around everywhere, as a matter of fact, so, but in any event, this time, I'm representing Avalon Bay, and once again, I'm pleased to be here on their behalf. I want to make just a couple of introductory comments, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Jeff Wood, who is the Director of Development of Avalon Bay, he has signed up as well, to come up and take you through a slide presentation or a PowerPoint presentation that's going to be very brief, to give you some background about Avalon Bay. And of course, there are representatives here this evening as well from Ribera Development, and also from the property owners, actually, as well, and of course, Mr. DePietro, who needs no introduction to anyone in these parts of the world. But, you know, this project started out many years ago, I guess the annexation occurred approximately four and a half years ago, and the property, the Anderson's Corner property was rezoned to the MXT zone in 2011, and so this application, of course, is for the final site plan for this project that relates solely to the 22 acres, plus or minus, that Avalon Bay is going to purchase and construct its project on. So, in terms of the staging, I did want to respond and just be clear that there is a staging in the sense that Stage 2 will be the retail commercial component, which I might add was originally envisioned to be larger than what it is today, but it's been, this property has been chipped away at by takings from the State Highway Administration for the road improvements and from Prince George's County. And in that regard, I would like to note that we have had a number of meetings with the Director of the Department of Public Works for Prince George's County, Haitham Majazi, and all of his staff relative to the impact that relocated Conti Road is going to have on this property. There is going to be a dedication, which we have come to an agreement, which is not quite papered yet, but we've come to an agreement with the county on that, and they have indicated with no equivocation in all of our meetings that they are going to approve an access permit to grant access directly onto Conti Road and to provide for the necessary median break so that full turning movement's going to occur at that location. So, it's been, it's been quite a road to get here, obviously, and we're pleased to be here this evening. I have some other comments I want to make relative to the staff presentation, which we largely, actually, which we completely agree with, and in fact, want to incorporate into our record. But I would like to have Mr. Wood come up and give you just a little bit of a flavor of the history of the company, which is quite impressive, and also what they really'd like to do out here. Thank you very much, Mr. Wood.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, and President Smalls, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I wanted to just very briefly walk you through these slides.
Wave when you want me to.
Okay, perfect. Avalon Bay Communities, you can actually go to the next slide, thank you. We're a publicly traded REIT, we're actually, just recently became the second largest publicly traded multifamily REIT in the country. We acquired, and you're very familiar with Archstone, but we acquired about 40% of Archstone recently. That transaction closed at the end of February. So, our company's grown from about 16, or excuse me, about a $9 billion company to about a $16 billion company, or about $25 billion market capitalization. And the reason I say that is to let you know that we're not a fly-by-night developer. We've been around for a long time. We continue to, and we will continue to be around for a long time. All of the information about our company is public, so if you type in AVB, which is our ticker symbol, you can see all of our financials. We're the lowest leveraged multifamily REIT in the country, so we're here to stay. We have about 273 apartment communities throughout the country, 81,000 apartment homes, and specifically in the mid-Atlantic region, we have about 14,000 apartment homes, 47 apartment communities in the mid-Atlantic region, and 21 alone in the state of Maryland. And we also, I should note, we also build all of our own properties and operate all of our own properties, so when we're planning and designing an apartment, we're not looking at it to make a quick buck and flip it and cut dollars. We know that we're going to own it for 10-plus years, and so we build quality product. We do everything from garden, and garden has come a long way from what Carl has mentioned today. The garden, there's a variation of different types of garden properties. We do mid-rise and high-rise as well, but obviously, what we'll be doing at this site is a garden and combination townhome product as well. Just to give you some context, all of the dirt that's been moved is the ICC, obviously, on I-95, you can't see it great, running north and south. The Conterra Town Center Future Development is labeled, and we're just north of that, right at the intersection of Virginia Manor, Van Duzen, and where the new Conti Road realigned will be, I think, 2015, 2016, hopefully, we'll be there. You can go to the next slide. This is, just to give you a kind of context, here's, and I've got another blown-up version of this, but this is the site plan laid out on the site, so kind of contextually, you can see where it is. The next slide, we'll drill in a little bit deeper. There's 11 buildings on the site. There's 11 buildings on the site, three- and four-story, a combination of townhome units. Some of the units have integral garages, where somebody can drive right in underneath their unit and then walk up without going into a corridor. They could walk up directly into their second floor, and they also will have the third floor as well. As well as four-story buildings that, that three stories on the end. What we try to do is, we don't want to make the effort of a big box that's ugly. We like to step it down on the side, so it gives you some context, and it's very, it's walkable, more pedestrian-friendly. You can see, actually, the entrance coming in. That's off at the bottom of the screen is Virginia Manor, and at the top of the screen is the new Conti Road realigned. And then the final slide is, I believe you have some renderings, but, you know, again, these are example exterior elevations and renderings. We will be working with the Community Parents Review Board to go through these in detail, but I'm obviously partial, but I think they're good-looking buildings. Again, as you can see, they're stepping down, and there's not, they're not, not trying to just do big blocks. So, there's some architectural interest there. And finally, last slide, just a few more renderings, but, again, 356 units, townhomes and garden flats. And I think that's it. If there's any questions, I'm happy to address them. Turn it over to Ed.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff. And just to conclude here, I wanted to make a couple of comments, if I could, relative to the, to the legal findings. And of course, you're making this decision this evening. This is a final action that's occurring, and so we want to make sure that, as part of the record, we incorporate all the documents which we filed, not just our drawings, renderings, and plans, but also the, the reports, the analyses, and the response documents that we filed relative to addressing questions which have been made. We also would like to incorporate as part of our record, in this case, the staff analysis and its factual findings and conclusions. Couple of items that Carl raised that I would like to, like to address myself to at this point. There is, there was a question raised relative to the required parking. We're providing 568, and I think the number was 688 would have been the required parking. And, and so, Avalon Bay provided information in the form of documentation, which it forwarded to the Planning Department, which analyzed the parking ratio that they have used at other locations. They gave five examples where they, in the five, I think they had one, where they were using a ratio of 1.6 per unit, which is what we have here. And their, their personal and practical hands-on experience has been that that is more than sufficient. That actually creates a surplus of parking spaces. They have other projects where it's lower than 1.6. So, I think with that justification having been provided, the, the city staff is satisfied with that analysis, and I think they're, they're happy with our 568 parking spaces, and we would ask you to agree with that as well. There is a recommendation, and I wanted to clarify, because one of the staff recommendations that Carl has in his report, first of all, he says he wants to include all of his findings and recommendations as conditions, as well as the recommended conditions in all the various referral reports. And he has a finding relative to Zip Cars in his report. We, we agree with that sentiment, and, and we would like to clarify that in our minds, that's a recommendation, not a requirement, because, because we can, you know, we can contact Zip Car or some other organization which, which performs the same service. We can ask them to allocate a car and have it available at our, at our, at our sales center or our management facility. If they will not agree to allocate that, that asset to us, we can't make them do it. But what we can do is facilitate the capability of people to have access to Zip Car or some other, some other recognized service that, that will provide rental cars on a short-term and, and quick-return basis. So, we want to make sure that it's just nothing more than a recommendation. The other item is the, the recent iteration of the revised traffic report. And I don't know if you've had an opportunity to really go through that yet, but there was a traffic report that was filed in March. And there was a request to, to, I believe, provide some additional information and analysis. So, a revised report was filed earlier this month. And it's in the record, it is in the record, is it not, Carl?
It's in the record, but are you talking about the one that's dated for April?
Yes.
Just received it today, so they haven't seen it yet.
You haven't seen it yet, okay. Well, it is in the record, though.
Yes.
Okay, good. I'd like to make some comments about that for your, for your review and analysis. Basically, we were requested to look at four intersections, not all of which exist today because of what's happening with the, with the relocation of Conti Road. But those, those intersections are set out in the report. And what, what Traffic Concepts, the transportation engineer for Avalon Bay, did was because of the, everything that's happening with the construction activity out there, it was really hard to get a reading on the exact number of trips going through today, because of just problems with, with construction activity. So, what Traffic Concepts did was to contact Mr. Michael Lenhart, who had done the traffic report for Strip Matter. And Mr. Lenhart had been able to get information on existing trips, existing levels of service on the roadways before the construction activity really became a problem out there. So, what Traffic Concepts did was to take his counts and incorporate them into this report. And those counts are accounts that you have analyzed and found approval for back in January, when you approved the conceptual site plan for, for the Strip Matter property. So, he took those and added them in, and he said, "Okay, that's what we have today, those trips, and we know they're good for existing conditions." Then, based upon the scoping agreement that had been thrashed out, agreed to with the staff, they, they generated background conditions, which was a 1% growth in through traffic annually for three-year, for a three-year period. So, 1% a year for three years, which is the construction, anticipated construction schedule that would take us all the way through completion of this residential component. He added those trips in. Then he added in the trips that would be generated by the development of the Strip Matter property. No, no Conterra development trips were added into this study, as it's not required. And, you know, and indeed, really, this study itself is more than what's required under the ordinance, because the ordinance says that we are tasked in the city with looking at whether or not the transportation facilities which exist or which are programmed or under construction or funded will be such that the traffic generated by this project will not exceed capacity. And of course, capacity is level of service E at the critical intersections, and we have four here. So, so this, this report goes beyond what's actually required under the city code. So, he included the 1% through traffic and the trips to be generated as a result of the development of the Strip Matter property, and he was able to, to then, after adding in the trips which would be generated from this project, come to a level-of-service analysis for each of the four intersections. And literally, all of the intersections are A or B. And of course, under the traffic methodology, level of service A is as good as it gets. Level of service D is, is a passing grade. Level of service E is capacity for the intersection, and that's technically what the test would require. So, the intersections here were all A or B, and one intersection, the intersection at Van Dusen and Conti Road, would be level of service C during the PMP count. So, you know, very good capacity results from this study based upon existing traffic, background traffic, and traffic to be generated by this project. So, so I think we feel very comfortable that, from a transportation standpoint, there's no adverse impact. The only other comment I'd like to make is that I think, I think Carl went through in his report all of the, all of the requirements in the ordinance in Section 20-12.5D, which are the criteria for your approval of the final site plan. I would note that the first one is that the site plan conforms with the purposes of the MXT zone, and of course, you made those findings before, when you, when you considered the conceptual site plan for this project as well. So, with all of that being said, I think we more than satisfy all of the ordinance requirements, and I would request your favorable vote to approve this final plan tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have an aside comment that's, that's inappropriate, but it's not negative. I have a great respect for you and the way you approach and explain, because you're very clear in your speaking. But we've been sitting up here, not this evening, but over the years, and if you're familiar with the word swag, that applies to traffic analysis, as far as I'm concerned. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I'm just going to ask staff this. So, I want to get to the, in the traffic study, the background traffic is relatively, well, it's not relevant to what this is going to be a few years from now, right? So, to measure that now on this road network is, you know, a long time ago, and one of my mentor engineers told me, "You can measure something with a micrometer, mark it with a crayon, and cut it with an axe." And that's pretty much, it sounds like, with what we're doing here. So, I got two questions for you, Carl. Whereas, is this, do you see this, and I'll, you know, again, I'm not directing this to the applicant, but this methodology of trying to figure out what the traffic's going to be like in this place somewhere downstream after everything gets built up? I mean, was this worth what the poor applicant paid for it?
It was, I think it's a bigger point than giving me for standing up here, because I'm going to.
I understand, sir. We're comfortable.
Let me explain to you this way, and I may sound sarcastic. This is a place-in-time issue where people have invested in land, and I'm using the expression, they're next-door neighbor, and I'm not talking about Strip Matter or Conterra. It's like booking a popular restaurant for 30 people and not showing up for six hours. We're not here to wait 20 more years when they might start and do that. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand.
Yeah, so it's a matter of point in time. Where each of them, in their sequence in which they arrived in the city, have been analyzed accordingly to the impact. One of them has been extremely generous by factoring in a great deal of Conterra traffic in their assumptions that will get, that's the next item, obviously. So, I mean, I think the city, are you asking if the city contributes to future traffic congestion?
No, 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 but we're requiring applicants to go through these, to these gyrations. And you're talking about a well-established area where you could actually make some measurements that are meaningful, but it seems like to me that they probably had to pay a lot of money, because I noticed the traffic engineers wear better suits than lawyers. And, and it just seems like a lot of study for very little reality.
Well, I have to be careful how I answer this.
And again, I'm not referring to this one.
It's important, because when they work with the other agencies, especially Prince George's County and the State Highway Administration, someone has got to factor in regional traffic. And in my opinion, I give everybody outside this region absolute F for looking at the big picture. So, these things are pieces of a puzzle that forces them to look at background traffic, because, you know, the state, the state is still looking at county lines as if they don't exist.
Yeah, that the car is not going to cross, right? Okay.
So, at least, or to the point where at least it comes up in discussion to force these people into reality.
You may recall, about 15 years ago, you and I worked on a regional transportation.
We did.
Thing, so anyhow, I will drop it. I appreciate the applicant bearing with me while I went down memory lane there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The best one we had was, as it related to the railroad station recently. And then a local president walked up and blew it out of the water. So, we understand.
If I can quickly, what Mr. Gibbs was saying too. Yeah, we have no objection if they, they make the effort to not, you know, to get a Zip Car and fail to do something. When you have parking reduction, we're trying to get everybody involved into giving people options that they don't necessarily need a car. Especially in the future, in the too-distant future, these people will have great access to walk across the street to hopefully retail restaurants and things like that across the street in the next property. It gives them one less reason necessarily to own a car, where you would have to be in a more urban area to have that kind of access anyways. So, the pedestrian systems and all the other things that are built into these things do interrelate to each other, as long as they can safely cross Van Dusen Road in the future.
Crossing Ts.
Only a couple of cars going down, according to your draft.
Today.
Are there any other applicants that want to speak? And is there a public hearing?
No one else from my side, unless we have questions.
Thank you. General public?
Just had one more question.
Let's see, he has one question.
I just, I just had one more, just a minor question. In terms of the, the property in the clubhouse, I was trying, I tried in everything to see where that was, and I was going to stop you on Slide 5. But just, just trying to clarify the question of the volleyball court will be adjacent to the clubhouse. I couldn't find, I, I saw the recommendation to put more activity in, and I saw the report come back that said we can accommodate a volleyball or a bocce ball court, but I never saw anywhere that it was supposed to be adjacent. So, I just wanted to make sure from the applicant that the word adjacent in the technical report is technically correct. That was all.
Yeah, Franch, and I can show you on that.
As long as it's technically, I just wanted to make sure it was correct, that it is something that's adjacent and not something.
Yeah, there's a large green space that abuts there with a sidewalk, the clubhouse. So, with that, and potentially a top lot on the other side.
Perfect.
There's a very large activity center inside with a gym complex and the pool. So, we're trying to coordinate, make it a central.
That's fine. I just couldn't reconcile the, the adjacent in anything else, and just wanted to make sure that was correct. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Bob Di Pietro, 502 Gorman Avenue, Laurel Avenue, on behalf of Ribera Land Development, who is selling the property, purchasing the property, then selling the property to Avalon Bay. We, you know, want to thank the staff for all the hard work. We've had several meetings up here. This has been a long journey for us, from annexation to final plan in the process. So, we thank you for your patience, and we ask for your favorable consideration on the final plan tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I just say one more thing?
Certainly.
Because everybody, I'm going to guess the salary. The state law still pertains to this property. The five years has not yet run its course. When county council does, you know, hopefully waive this and allow them to go forward, there'll be still a little bit of the five years left. We can, the law provides us that we can, you can approve site plans and zoning, something like that, but there could be no physical start for the property until such time the five-year period ends, or the county council waives the five years residual, which is increasingly small as everybody goes there.
You're talking to the president, correct? You're talking to the president, council, right now?
It's county council.
They are, yes. It's a county council, right? Just wanted to make sure.
Listening for motions.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to approve Final Plan MXT Application Number 832 for Anderson's Corners, 6901 Van Dusen Road, and the Resolution Number 1305-PC.
Is there a second?
Second to include the technical staff recommendations, the eight recommendations.
I'll accept that.
Thank you.
Please call a roll.
There's a hand up, Mr. Chairman.
Where? Oh, okay, I didn't see.
My name is Pastor Victor McGadman. I just want to find out where we are. We were sent letters, and we just want to know how this is going to impact our community.
Would you give your address, sir, for the record?
14100 Leadberry Court. That's somewhere around Van Dusen there, and...
What community do you live in, sir?
Wilshire.
That's for the next one.
Yeah, so we just want to know how this impacts us, and, and how it relates to us, and, you know, sent letters. So, we just want to know what, what the letter means to us.
Please do.
The, the community that you're north of is the next agenda item, but this is southeast of you.
Okay.
So, this one's a little bit down from you.
Okay.
Across Van Dusen Road. Van Dusen Road is being improved north of, the further south we get by the time you hit, you know, where the freeway stop sign is at Van Dusen, where it hits, you can turn right to Stan Van Dusen, and you stay, it becomes Virginia Manor. That intersection becomes a major, major intersection. But Wilshire Estates is further up. You're actually, the, the intersection that you're, right at Conti and Van Dusen, will probably, within two years, be actually minimized, because Conti Road... will probably, within two years, be actually minimized, because Conti Road, which feeds into that, which has a lot of traffic today, is going to veer down past this development right here on its easterly side, and the Van Dusen Conti will be, I'm not going to call it a country road, but you'll probably see a traffic reduction.
I'm just trying to take it inside.
Because all the action is shifting southward away from you. But stay around for the next one.
Robert, keep calling him, John. Will, Robert, do you know where that is, what Carl just described? Because we could show him right now.
Can you show him where it is?
Yes, I can.
Please.
I brought my little hand.
Oh, there he is.
Okay, this is Maryland 198 to 995. This is the, you have to remember how, this is an old slide. I borrowed this from Conterra.
Doesn't have ICC on it, right?
Yeah. But the subject properties are down here. The, this is Anderson's Corner, right here. And the next one up is Strip Matter. This is Van Dusen Road, and then Conti. This actually shows Conti as it'll exist years from now, where instead of going like this right now, it comes up here and then veers up here, because, sir, your development's right there.
That's Wilshire.
Okay. But in the future, right after it passes the mosque, it actually veers southward and then goes into the rest of this road, which you know as Virginia Manor today, but eventually be four to six lanes, it'll be called Kenworth Avenue Extended, coming outside of the Beltway. And it forms a, a loop system to Conterra. But can I tell you when Conterra will be built, because I've been waiting a quarter century, so.
I've been waiting long.
I was there and didn't know where I was. Does that help you? Okay. And you'll come the next time it's on the agenda that concerns you, right?
It's on right after.
It's on right after this.
So the, I think we have a motion in a second, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we do. We're ready for roll call. Not a roll call, tally the vote.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
I'm Mr. Kish.
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bateman?
Yes.
Chairman Welford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okeydoke. That included, he included the resolutions there. Okay. Other side.
I just flashed this up, and I don't know if the commission had any questions about it. Again, we, this illustrates the content, and it's not very clear, but it's a very big arrow. We actually got into a PDF.
But it may help with Strip Matter next.
Yes.
You can show where that is. Just Wilshire, it's up there.
Item 14, concept plan of MXT application number 833, Van Dusen School Site, Westside. You said you had everything, you still have this one, too?
I have.
Okay.
Get with it.
With your permission, I'd like you to stay up here, because I have to do some presentation.
You have more than permission?
Yeah.
You mean I didn't bellow?
Thanks, Christie.
Keeps it straight. Okay.
If this looks familiar, it should. This is the, that portion, what's in front of you this evening is the area outlined in black on the north side of this slide.
Right.
This is the, the other part, and this, in fact, is a phased development, because the lower development, you remember, you already have a concept plan for, because when it was annexed from Prince George's County, it was already zoned MXT. So the, the applicant already has a site plan, which you will see the first section next, at your meeting four weeks from today. So in other words, what you're seeing tonight is what we call the Board of Education property, which is technically the State Highway Administration property, which is this 19 acres with this strange appendage down here and this. So that's the subject of what's in front of you this evening. Because even though there was no jurisdiction at the time, though, Westside was always perceived as being an integrated development that composed of these two parcels. What's in front of you simply brings the other one in now that it has, and I won't go into, Mr. Gibbs, I'm sure will elaborate more than I will. This is the, the culmination now, where it can eventually start towards a, a final plan of its own, because as you can see, and the, I always call this salmon, salmon color, that lot line will, will not have any significance, because it'll be the commercial area that's already been approved conceptually. And then this is Westside Boulevard that goes into here. This is still moving along to be a hotel site. And what you'll see is this area in here is the gated apartments at Westside that you'll see next month at this time. So what you're looking at here, now, of interest, I think, too, got to hope I can pull this up, because this was a... There is at the time, I, they were showing in the slide before, so for some reason, not cooperating, but, and we'll be happy to provide you with a copy of, there are renderings that are already part of the record that show the sensitivity, the, the city is on, on Westside Boulevard, adjacent to Wilshire Estates. The applicant had already previously submitted a, a landscape plan that shows this area and the trees that would, they're actually going to do a berm on this side to make sure that Wilshire Estates people are protected. It's a berm with trees on top of it to buffer it, because it will be a four-lane boulevard next door to that. So I applaud the fact, we've tried so hard to reach out to Wilshire Estates people, so I applaud you for coming. Everybody else has kind of ignored us. And we are concerned, just because you're not in the city doesn't mean the city will not pay attention to you. So again, this is part of the concept plan for that. There is a, as I said, a berm buffer, and this formalizes the original concept of up to 80 townhouses in the area in, let's call that one lime green, in here. And then again, this is part of it. This area in here will be, will be buffered and landscaped along Wilshire Boulevard. And again, this is already, this is the, the line here that will eventually be, be erased. I'm told they're in the process, possibly already done, of commenting their relationship, because the, the state took this from the Board of Education, and I'm being redundant a little bit, but just as a quick refresher, the state took this from the Board of Education. This was envisioned as a school board property at one time, but apparently was considered unnecessary for, Conterra worked out its own arrangement for its public facilities, so. And then this was needed, because as you remember very quickly, the, the Strip Matter property was devastated, is I guess too strong a word, but suffered a large amount of taking for this interchange, because the area at this, this, this was all Strip Matter land down here. So they lost a great deal of acreage here that I won't go into, I'm sure Mr. Gibbs will. So this was the absolute only place, which is off-site, which is why the state's interested in deeding this land to the city for the construction of Westside Boulevard, that you can enter this and still meet what we call ASHTO requirements, American Association of State and Traffic Officials, blah, 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 blah. Because of spacing, the roadway in front will be of a certain size, and then this roadway, there's no way they will allow access on this, because this will basically be an arterial approach to the interchange that you now see under construction.
That's the only way.
The absolute only way. That was the earliest, or the, the soonest place to my knowledge that, that could get access. And it goes without saying, hopefully, that this entrance and the entrance to Anderson's Corner are crossing each other. We don't allow staggered things, because this becomes confusing for traffic. That jurisdiction lies to Prince George's County Public Works and Transportation and the State Highway Administration. So we actually have no jurisdiction on that segment of Van Dusen Road.
Mr. Brendel, can I?
Ask, do you know where you are on that map right now? Have you been able to keep up with where you are?
This is Wilshire Estates, right here.
Yes, I think I can figure it out.
Okay.
How far, Mr. Brendel, how far is it from the roadway to the back of those homes? Approximately?
From this? Well, it depends, because it, now, this is an early concept, it's actually, doesn't go that close to here, but there's at least 30 feet to that, and in the back of the homes is another, probably 50 feet in their rear yard. So I'm going to guess it's almost 100 feet. But again, that's why the applicant, very early, proffered a buffering system, because he knew, because, you know, you, you don't need as much of a buffer when you're buffering townhouses against townhouses, which is the Mayfair community here. But this probably will be unused, and there is open space in this and too, so we might do a little buffering in the landscape plan, but again, we don't tend to buffer towns from towns. But for, for a road like this, and since this will be a commercial retail and restaurant area, buffering is important for this area, because they're very nice houses, and those people paid, you know, a good deal of money for them, so we want to, we want to pay attention to that fact.
And that land to the north, or, I don't know where north is on this, but...
North is up this way.
Okay. That land to the north is not in the city.
This?
Yes.
Correct. Yeah, Wilshire Estates and Mayfair are not in the city limits, nor plan to be. They're all in our designated growth area, but again, we can only take annexation petitions from the majority of people.
I'm kidding.
I just try to defeat the, the search and seize thing every time it comes up.
I've always said we're heading for the Beltway. We'll stop when we get there.
Ready for Mr. Gibbs?
Carl, can I, can I borrow your laser?
You sure? If you come get it. I could walk, but I'm going to be lazy. Just the button. It's a nice, it's a nice, strong, yeah.
Crawl with your pointer, please, when you go. Crawl.
Crawl, yeah.
He ran.
Okay, I will. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and of course, President Smalls, once again, Edward Gibbs, an attorney with offices at 1300 Caraway Court in Largo, and I'm very pleased, again, to be here before you on this item, and to represent Strip Matter Land LLC. The applicant in this particular conceptual site plan proposal, and the owner of the land, which is immediately abutting, and which was the subject of the conceptual site plan that you approved on January the 16th or 17th of this year, I believe. Just, just a little bit of background, if I might, because, you know, this is really the, the second part of, of our application. What we had, and I've had, you know, I've had the pleasure to represent Strip, the Strip Matters for more years than they can remember at this point, but...
I am here.
Bonus, bonus.
By, by the way, Mr. Chairman, my bonus, my client told me the other day that my bonus is going to be this little strip property right here. So I'll probably be coming in with a detailed site plan for an outdoor, outdoor bowling alley or a spaghetti farm, one of the two.
Good luck with that.
That's just a joke, that's just a joke, obviously. So in any event, Strip Matters started out with 64 acres, which is this area that I'm outlining for you. And way back when, the State Highway Administration came to us, and Mr. Ed Harris from the Attorney General's Office representing the state, came to us and said, listen, we're going to acquire this 25 acres, all right? So they took us from a 64-acre prime site right on 95 with tons of frontage, took away all of our frontage, and this 25 acres. We told them back at that point in time, maybe it was 2009, we said, look, you know, you've got to end up giving us some form of access so we can develop our property. And if you can't do that, then you're going to have to acquire the entire 64 acres. So the State Highway Administration said, okay, we're going to, we don't want to buy the whole thing, so we're going to try to find you some other access. So at one of our earliest meetings, we talked about this 19.89 acres, which was at that time owned by the Prince George's County Board of Education. And so they said, well, you know, what if we somehow can get you access through there? And I said, you know, that's, that's fine. We, we can do that, if you'll, you'll go ahead and build our access road for us, and we'll take that. So what they ended up doing was, in 2011, there was a three-party agreement as part of the Conterra settlement of their eminent domain proceeding. And so in that three-party agreement, which was signed by Prince George's County, by the State Highway Administration, and by Conterra, and it's a, you know, a many, many, many-page document, but there is a paragraph in that document which required Prince George's County to deed this 19.89 acres to the State Highway Administration, for the express purpose of providing access for the Strip Matter property. So as we went through the development, the negotiation process with the state, they said, well, look, instead of us just giving you an access here, why don't we just deed this entire parcel to you? Now, we ultimately agreed with that proposal, but we did so at some, the Strip Matters did so, at some personal risk on their own part, because, because when we annexed in the Strip Matter property into the city, and that annexation became effective last fall, this property, this 39 acres here, what that's remaining, was already zoned MXT. Prince George's County had put that in the MXT zone when they adopted the Subregion One Master Plan and Sectional Map Amendment. This piece, the school board piece, was left in a zoning classification called ROS, which is an open space classification for publicly owned land. So when we annexed this piece, and, and when I say we annexed it, the State Highway Administration signed the, consented to the annexation, because they wanted to help us out. When this was annexed in, the city assigned it the PI Zone, which is an institutional zoning classification, which basically has no density to it. So when we, when we agreed with the State Highway Administration to take this piece as a partial settlement of the fair market value payment for 25 acres of MXT, because all of this had been zoned MXT, not, not just the 39 acres, but all of it was MXT. So we said, okay, you're taking 20, 25 acres here, you're going to give us this piece, which has about 12 of the 19 acres that are usable. And, but, but you're getting credit for 12, 13 acres of MXT land, and we're taking in return 12 usable acres of land that's not zoned. So we went ahead and filed a rezoning application with the city. And you heard that back in January, the same night that you heard the conceptual site plan application for this piece. And ultimately, the mayor and council rezoned this 19.89 acres MXT in January as well. So, so now we're all MXT. Unfortunately, when you acted on this conceptual site plan, you could not act the same night and approve a conceptual site plan for the, for this piece, because it was not yet zoned MXT. So we had to wait. We went to the council after you approved this. Mayor and council then approved this rezoning. So now where we are this evening is we're back with the conceptual site plan for what is now the State Highway Administration parcel. Now, parenthetically, I would note for you that we have arrived at a complete settlement with the State Highway Administration, and they have, they have closed their file on the Circuit Court eminent domain proceeding for this 25 acres. We have a universal settlement agreement, which has been signed, and all we are waiting at this point in time is for the Board of Public Works to approve that settlement agreement. And we expect that that's going to occur. It's about a 60-day process, and that process started about 10 days ago. So shortly here, a month and a half or so, we're going to be through the Board of Public Works. The Board of Public Works is going to take this right-of-way, right up to here, for Westside Boulevard, and they are going to convey that by deed to the city. And that's going to become a public road. The, the Attorney General's Office did not want to put a plat in front of the Board of Public Works, because they said they've never seen one, and they'll get too confused. So they're going to deed this right-of-way to the city, and then they are going to deed the balance of the property to the Strip Matters, and the settlement will be concluded. So, so at that point in time, the Strip Matters will own this SHA parcel, and will be able to add it to their holdings that remain here. So 30, 39 acres here, and this is 19.89 acres, but the state is taking some of the frontage out here. So, so that's going to be the totality of the, of the Strip Matter holdings, and will comprise the entirety of the Westside development. We've chosen to show you the entire conceptual site plan, even though you're only voting on this piece tonight, because you've already approved this. But in its entirety, we have Mill Creek Residential Trust, which is going to purchase and build 500 multifamily units on this tan area here. And that is the site plan, that final plan for that has been filed, and will be before you...
May 14.
Next month.
14th of May.
14th of May. So that, that will be moving forward. They're going to proceed directly to permit. Here is where we have the hotel site. It's a maximum of 150 rooms, strategically sighted on the property at the highest elevation point, so that it has great visibility and prominence from I-95. This light green colored area here is, is in, at this point in time, under contract, I believe, is that under contract? It's just, it is under contract to NV. They want to build the residential townhomes. There's a maximum of 80 townhomes that are authorized for that location. There's a maximum of 80 townhomes that are authorized for that location. Artery Organization is under contract with the hotel site, and their proposal is to construct a Marriott-flagged hotel. Is it Marriott? Isn't that correct? Whoa.
Oops, sorry.
And then this salmon-colored area out front will be a maximum of 200,000 square feet of commercial retail uses. And we do not have a contract yet with a commercial retail user. We have been in conversation with some who, if it works out, you will be very, very pleased with who will be doing this project. So that's not, that's not consummated yet. We do have an issue with a five-year hold potentially on this parcel of land because it was annexed in and got a higher zoning classification. Now, it is conceivable that the five-year hold could legally be determined not to apply because when the Prince George's County Council adopted the Subregion One Master Plan, they included an express finding in their resolution of approval, CR 58 of 2010, and Amendment 27, found on page 18 of that resolution, specifically noted because, because I had, I had testified on this property when the county council was adopting the Subregion One Master Plan, because we were already well into negotiations with the State Highway Administration relative to this piece. And I had requested that it be rezoned MXT at that time. The council declined to do that, but they did adopt Amendment Number 27, which basically at that point said that if the Strip Matters through some type of a land exchange acquired title to this property from the Board of Education, and in return were swapping for some parkland, then it was appropriate for this property to be rezoned to the MXT zone. Now, the actions of the State Highway Administration in acquiring this property abrogated the parkland language contained in Amendment 27. But unequivocally, the, the action of the Prince George's County Council recognized that the MXT zone is the appropriate zoning classification for this property. So when you rezoned it to MXT, really, you were doing it in conformance with your master plan, as well as with the master plan that, that the county recommendation had for this property. So that's where we find ourselves tonight. We have a maximum of 80 townhomes that are to be built in this area, and some component of the 200,000 square feet of commercial retail uses. We envision that the commercial retail is going to be developed in a unified fashion and not in a piecemeal fashion because we just don't think that that's sound planning. So the thought process is to do all of this at one time. And we certainly appreciate, and would appreciate, the city's support for any conversations we need to have with Prince George's County authorities relative to the release of a hold if it's deemed legally necessary to do that. So that's, that's pretty much where we are. The action that we're asking you to take tonight is just to approve the conceptual site plan for this 19.89 acres, which includes this mixed-use component, the residential townhomes and the commercial retail. But we can't lose sight of the fact that this is really one unified overall mixed-use development. That includes, you know, of course, the multifamily, the townhomes, the hotel, and the commercial retail. And, and you know, we think that the interfacing, the Avalon Bay community, this is our access onto Van Dusen, the Avalon Bay access is directly across the street. And, you know, we think that there are some exciting synergistic opportunities that can be created here because Avalon Bay's got the 356 units over here, plus a smaller, there'll be a smaller 6,000 to 10,000 square foot commercial retail component over there. But together, together, I think it's an exciting opportunity for mixed-use development in the city at, you know, one of the prime north-south interchanges on the I-95 system. We would like to incorporate, if we could, because I think it's appropriate to do so, I think it's appropriate to incorporate the record from the, from the prior conceptual site plan case into this case, because, because they're, they're really inextricably joined together at the hip. We'd like to, we'd like to say that we've reviewed the staff report in this case. We'd like to incorporate it as a part of our affirmative proof in this application. We appreciate the, the comments of the staff and all of the findings and conclusions that were incorporated into the staff report. I don't know that I need to do this, but, you know, we do have a transportation element that's required as proof in the conceptual site plan, and I have extra copies of the three. The basic transportation report that we filed the last time around, which addressed solely the impact of this entire project, and I'm saying not just the townhomes and the portion of the retail, but this traffic report addresses the impact of 500 multifamily units, a 150-room hotel, 80 residential townhomes, and 200,000 square feet of commercial retail.
That's the one we got previously.
Is that the one that was updated January 14, 2013?
Indeed it is.
Okay. We have that in our packets here.
And then, when, when we heard there might be some questions relative to, to traffic analysis and impact by neighbors, we went ahead and we did Addendum One, which incorporated all of the trips from Anderson's Corner. Okay? And, and that is an addendum dated January 14, 2013, and it's titled Strip Matter Property, Addendum One. And then we did, bearing the same date, Addendum Two to the Traffic Impact Study. And this Addendum Two incorporated approximately half of the trips that would be fully generated by the Conterra development. And the reason we did this addendum is because in our conceptual site plan application for the Strip Matter property, the 39 acres, there was a referral out to the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission Transportation Division, Mr. Thomas Masag, and he sent a referral memo up to Mr. Brendel. And he said that he had reviewed our initial report, the update of January 14th, and he said, "I note that there's no analysis of Conterra." And he said that he would have recommended that at least some short-to-midterm analysis of the Conterra impact be included. So we went, and, and we had, before this property was annexed into the city, we had actually met with Mr. Masag to scope a study, because when we first started this long journey, we didn't know that we were going to end up in the city where we were happy to be. But we scoped a study with Mr. Masag, and he, in his scoping agreement, actually recommended that if, that, not that we include all of Conterra, but that we look at the exact level of Conterra, which is included in Addendum Two. We took those, those actual trips from his, his scoping memorandum with us. So, so we had the original traffic study updated January 14th, Addendum One, Addendum Two. Now, one thing we, one assumption we made is, is that Conterra has an approved preliminary subdivision plan. They have a number of improvements that they have to have fully funded before they can pull their first building permit. So we felt it was only fair that if, if, before they could pull a building permit, if we were going to assume half of their trips, then we should get to count the improvements that they have to make before they could get building permit number one. And those are assumed in here, and with that, no intersection, we had six intersections that we were tasked to study, not one intersection exceeds level of service D, which is a higher level of service than what your statute requires. Your statute requires will not exceed capacity, capacity is level of service E. So I would like to add these into the record again.
Sorry, Paul, for the extra, extra paper.
We will give that to you electronically if you don't mind. Oh, you do?
We got all three of those that he referenced.
So, you know, I'm not going to go through all of the conceptual site plan criteria again. I mean, you heard all the criteria. They're equally relevant to this application as they were in January. They are again expressed in a lengthy justification statement that we filed with this conceptual site plan application, in which we are incorporating as an affirmative part of the proof in our case. So, so with that having been said, I would just urge that we conform to all of the criteria, and of course, your, your able and professional staff have come to that same conclusion, and we would respectfully request that you approve our conceptual site plan this evening. I do have Mr. Kevin Foster, Mr. Mike Lenhart, Mr. Lenhart is the traffic engineer of the Strip Matter, and I might say, he also willingly offered all of his trip counts to Traffic Concepts when they did their update for Avalon Bay. And Mr. Kevin Foster, our land planner, I don't think that they would say anything different than what I've said, but they're here if you need to hear from them at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I think there should be stock options with your bonus. He eschews obfuscation. Any questions from the commissioners?
Yes.
Yes, please, go.
I, I think these are for the staff, maybe for the applicant. In terms of the recommendations, first of all, you threw me off because you use letters and you always use numbers, so I think we have, so we have eight recommendations in the technical report, but yet in the resolution, we dropped one. And is that, normally, our resolutions match the technical reports. So the one that was dropped for the, that's in the technical report but not in the resolution is F, which would have been the eighth recommendation, "The final site and landscape plan shall reflect detailed drawings of a buffer area located between West Side Boulevard," is...
The omission was inadvertent, so if you could include that, yeah, we'll modify the resolution to include that, yeah.
Okay, so that should be in the resolution. Okay, so that would match. And then my second question is that on recommendation D, "All other requirements and conditions submitted by city departments as contained," the fire department in a memo dated March 25th stated in point one that there needs to be access points through the fence line to be able to get rear access to the residential structures budding up against the property. And I would assume that was referring to the Wilshire. But is that then include, I didn't, is that covered in this?
No, because just this is the concept. What they were referring to was that when you see Mill Creek Trust next month, that is a gated apartment community, and there's two gates. The one is right off of the cul-de-sac, and his comments relate to the fact that they will have to provide a cul-de-sac width that allows the turning, safe turn and quick turning radius of any public safety vehicle that's entering into the Mill Creek property. That's what, really what he's saying.
Okay. So do we cover the fire department's recommendations? Are they covered, or?
Yeah. A lot of those things are things that they will address when they come in with their final plan in the next few weeks.
Okay.
We're having interdepartmental jury Friday, a week from now, to go over all the comments to date, incorporate those, update the staff memorandums, and then issue our staff report for the May. So this is just like the first phase.
Okay. And then does that same thing apply to the memo from Paul McCullough to you that says we recommend installing sidewalks along both sides of the roadway?
Yeah, again, those are technical details. We're going to, we have a couple rough edges to work out with him on, 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 West Side Boulevard. But yes, those are all things that need to be reflected in the final plan.
That's all my questions?
They're just a little bit, they're a month behind the Avalon Bay people.
That's all my questions.
Red?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Are we ready for a motion? Okay?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Concept Plan of MXT Application Number 833, Van Dusen School Site, Westfield, filed by Strip Matter Land LLC for recommendation to the mayor and city council to include the technical staff report with recommendations A through F, and also include action, approval on action on Resolution Number 13-06-PC with the one addition of adding recommendation F that is included in the technical report.
Thank you. Ms. Green, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Batman?
Yes.
Mr. Wofford?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Chairman Williford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, there are some ideas listed twice in the recommendation. We will make sure that it matches up to the resolution, so F may become a G.
Oh, thank you. Rick was on top of that one.
Thank you very much. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Hey.
Second man.